Good evening and welcome to the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting. This meeting will be held by, by way of Zoom teleconference. Uh, Ms., uh, Patty, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Life. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope?
Yes. Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes, present.
Present also.
And maybe televised live. Uh, Ms. Howard, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Boncory. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I got it. Again, I don't know what happened before.
Okay. Executive session. The chair anticipates that the committee may choose to go into executive session on a purpose number one to discuss a complaint alleging a violation of the open meeting law filed on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty against the Winthrop School Committee by Todd Sacco. The complaint alleges a violation occurred on September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, when the Winthrop Committee failed to deliberate and discuss an MOU that was approved at the meeting. The complaint further alleges that the MOU was brought up and voted on with no discussion, no particulars, color, or reasoning. Can I get a motion to go into an executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Patty, can we have a roll call vote for executive session?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope? Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Just a reminder for, uh, folks to leave this meeting and to click leave the bottom right-hand corner of your screen, uh, and then re-enter in the executive session Zoom meeting email that you received.
Do you hear that?
Yeah.
Hey, we are back from executive session. Um, at this point in the meeting, we have public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? I want to remind those participating in public, uh, comment to keep their comments to within three minutes to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to put forth their comments. And this is not a question-answer period or debate on issues, but for public comment for school committee members to consider when making a decision on matters that the public is concerned with. Um, I would ask that you raise your hand. Chat becomes an issue because we, we can't keep order in, uh, as to who is, uh, looking to make public comment. Mr. Matucci, will you keep the, uh, official time so that we can, uh, keep people on track?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I will begin. Um, the first is, um, Todd Sacco.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and committee members. Thank you for, uh, giving me the time here. Todd Sacco precinct two, uh, just, um, I wanted to reach out and just say a couple of things. One, I want to commend you for taking corrective action with regard to the school committee's violation of the open meeting law. I'm eager to hear, uh, the particulars of that, uh, of the two agreements in question. Uh, I'm also eager to hear about a plan I'm hearing to have the schools open, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. And I also wanted to personally thank Julie Barry for, uh, looking out for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacco. Any further public comment?
Um, yes, we have, uh, uh, let's see, Dorina Shay.
Dorina, you're on mute.
Dorina, can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Um, hello to you all and thank you for your time and attention. Uh, my name is Dorina Shay and I am a mother of three, two that have already graduated and a current senior. I understand the situation we are here for today is complex and has a lot of moving parts and that a lot of different people are struggling to figure it all out. I am aware of the COVID nineteen related statistics that are uploaded daily. And when looking at these numbers that are posted, these numbers are so small that it does not make sense. We are not in school full-time, let alone hybrid. In the past seven months, we have had four hundred and twenty-four total cases, four hundred and twenty-four total out of approximately eighteen thousand people in our town. This is a two-point-three-six percent infection rate. I received only a few responses to my emails that I sent to the members of this committee. Some have said that bad decisions were made and that it stresses them to this day. The thing is, a lot of bad decisions were made when we entered this pandemic. No one knew what to do. However, this is not the case now. We are way into this and we know how to handle ourselves. The fact of the matter is, this is how we will have to live for the unforeseen future. So are these kids expected to be home in their rooms, struggling for how long? I will end this by saying that we should be given options. I want my son in school safely, but I also fully respect those that opt to stay home and learn remotely. We have to figure this out for our kids' mental health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorina. Further public comment?
Okay, we do have, uh, Sophia Vitale. Hi. Hi, Sophia.
Hi. Um, my name's Sophia Vitale and I'm a senior at Winthrop High School. Uh, I'd just like to share a few reasons that I believe that we should go back to school. Uh, us students have had nothing that has been anything close to normal. Uh, we want to be able to learn in an environment that is not in our home. Uh, many students have also, I've seen, been doing groups, um, of school at others' houses every day. My view on that is that I'd rather be in a school building where students are forced to follow guidelines. Being in school for seven hours of the day, following social distancing rules and wearing a mask will ultimately be a lesser chance to get the virus than kids being in others' homes without any rules at all. By having school and soon sports will take up all of students' days, leaving us no time to break distancing guidelines. I'd much rather risk myself and others getting sick to actually gain an education rather than just have others break guidelines just to hang out with friends and get nothing out of it. I strongly believe that we should be given the chance to even try out the hybrid model. It is better to do it now in case things go poorly rather than wait till November and push the virus even further. From an overall standpoint of students, this isolation is very damaging to our health and will set us uh, way back compared to many other communities across the country that are doing hybrid models. Especially for seniors, it is very hard to apply to college uh, with limited one-on-one help with guidance counselors and teachers. I really hope that you all take into, into consideration again, myself and many others' voices in wanting to get back into our school for our last year at Winthrop High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
Thanks, Sof.
Any further public comment?
Yes, we have, um, let me see, Chris Kovasov, and I cannot, I can't get Chris to speak unless he's promoted to a panelist. I'm sorry, he must be on that old version that, that happened to someone last week as well.
Can he type his question in the chat and we read it?
Um, if he can hear us and he can do that, that would be great. That's all I show for public comment at this time.
Okay, we can go back to public comment and see if we can solve that gentleman's, uh, access issue.
Okay.
The next portion of public comment, if we have nothing further.
There's one more person with the end.
One more person, uh, Stacy McKenzie.
Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening, I'm Stacy McKenzie. I'm a resident of fifteen Emerson Road. I have three children, all school-aged children. My son is in sixth grade. He's on the Tigers team, uh, with Dee Foley and Mr. Domeno. My daughter is in third grade with Mrs. Turner and Mr. Dee Felice. And my son is in first grade with Ms. King. And I have to tip my hat off to all those teachers. They are doing an excellent job keeping the children engaged um, as much as possible, keeping them on task. They're delivering some great lessons and I can see my children really thriving. Um, obviously, touch time with the teacher is the first way to go and the best way to go, in my opinion. Um, I'm also a teacher as well in a different school system. So I do feel that, um, being in the classroom is the best approach. And I agree with what everyone said prior to me getting, um, on speaking. Um, it's really detrimental to these children now. Um, everyone's scared. Um, I know it's a scary situation, but we really need to navigate these waters and get into school. Um, I appreciate all your time. And Lisa, I just want to, um, quote Mrs. Polo on Facebook. She posted, um, remember when the superintendent's hardest job was to call off school in the snow? So, uh, I thought that was kind of funny and appropriate to say tonight. So I commend you guys, but I really think we need to really, um, navigate these waters together and get these children a plan to safely get back into school sooner than possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Mrs. Polo always brings a smile to my face. So that was helpful. Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next section, is there any further public comment before we move on?
Uh, it looks like Todd Sacco.
Hey, sorry, guys. I just wanted to ask, for the consideration of everybody on the phone, might you consider taking the agenda out of order today? Um, and at least address the, uh, plan to go forward so that most of the parents on this phone can go back to taking care of their kids. Thank you for your consideration.
Um, I don't have a problem going out of order with, there's two things that we need to get out of, uh, order, if that's possible. I'll entertain a motion to take the agenda out of order and bring forward unfinished business so that we can, uh, release our, uh, council.
Motion.
Second.
Take it out of order. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Okay, I would entertain a motion uh, to designate Paul J. Hardnett as Labor Counsel to respond to the, uh, the, uh, complaint for the open meeting law, uh, allegation. So I would entertain a motion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boncory, seconded by Mr. Capabianco. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, uh, the chair would accept a motion for the committee to have a discussion regarding the memorandum of agreement between the Winthrop School Committee and the Winthrop Teachers Association regarding the reopening of schools for the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one school year. It was voted in open session at the September twenty-eighth meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell? Can I have a second, please? Second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Last.
Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Hardnett, uh, as the attorney for the school committee and as just being named as our label counsel to respond to this, uh, complaint, can you bring us through these documents, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Perrin. At the September tw- uh, the agenda for the September twenty-eighth meeting contained, uh, an item labeled unfinished business. Within that particular item, there were two, um, two issues. A vote on an agreement, a memorandum of agreement between the Winthrop School Committee and the Winthrop Teachers Association. The second item was a vote on an agreement between the Winthrop School Committee and local eight-eight-eight, SEIU. Um, they represent the cafeteria workers. The Winthrop Teachers Association represents the ESPs, the teachers, the secretaries, and the nurses, um, within the Winthrop School Department. That those, that vote was posted and on the evening of September twenty-eighth, the committee took a public vote to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Teachers Association and also to approve the memorandum of agreement with local SEIU. All that was done in public session. Um, on September thirtieth, eh, an open meeting law complaint was filed alleging that there was no discussion or an explanation of the particulars of the two memorandums of agreement prior to the votes taken by the school committee. The open, the Attorney General's office in the open meeting law permits public bodies to review, as they are required to do, potential open meeting law violations and take what they describe as remedial action. As I mentioned earlier, the vote and the notice of the vote were all done with public knowledge. The vote, once it was taken, the memorandum of agreement with the Winthrop Teachers Association has in fact been posted on the Winthrop School Committee website and was posted on October second. So it's been posted for all the citizens who would like to see a copy of the, of the memorandum of agreement on that website. So there's been no attempt by the committee not to be transparent with regard to what took place on September twenty-eighth. But as I mentioned, the Attorney General permits public bodies to engage in what would be described as remedial action. So I am prepared at this point in time to describe for the, who, uh, for the public tonight, the actual contents of the memorandum of agreement, both with the Teachers Association and with regard to local eight-eight-eight. Um, let's deal first with that particular memorandum of agreement. It's the charter of the two and it was entered into for a specific purpose. As the committee is aware and the citizens of, uh, Winthrop are aware, the school is open, but it is open at this point in time for remote learning. As a result of being in a remote learning status, it has reduced significantly the need for cafeteria workers to be in the school buildings since there are no, there are no students in the school buildings preparing lunches. The only need at this point in time, uh, is for a limited number of cafeteria workers to prepare uh, lunches for individuals who qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. There are approximately seventeen cafeteria workers in the bargaining unit. Only six of them were necessary when the agreement was reached to actually prepare the lunches. So as a result of the remote learning status that the school department is currently in, the school department has furloughed the cafeteria workers, eleven of them, from their jobs. They are eligible for unemployment because they're not working at this point in time. The terms of the MOA specifically describe that the, uh, cafeteria workers, uh, may be called back depending upon whether or not there was a, an increased need for lunches and there's an increased need for employees. The school committee has a right to call people back. The agreement itself is going to be revisited, uh, sometime potentially in November as, uh, the committee gets further information with regard to whether or not it's going to be remove, moving from remote learning status to a hybrid status. Um, as part of the agreement, the co- the committee agreed, even though they were laying off, excuse me, furloughing eleven employees, that during the time of the furlough, the committee agreed to maintain the health insurance under the current, uh, split that's in place with the employee paying their share and the school committee paying its share during the term of the furlough. When the employees return, they in fact will receive seniority for the amount of time that they've been out. That is the sum and substance of the memorandum of agreement that the school committee approves on September twenty-eighth when it, uh, um, when it voted at that point in time. Now, the memorandum of agreement with the Teachers Association, again, as the committee and the citizens in Winthrop are aware, in remote learning, uh, the terms and conditions of employment of the staff and how they were going to function in remote learning and in hybrid learning, when and if that comes about, those things had to be adjusted. So beginning in late s- summer, the parties began to negotiate the reopening agreement. The contents of the agreement deal with the terms and conditions of the Winthrop staff members when they're in remote and when they're in hybrid learning. The agreement creates a joint committee. It's a health committee. And the purpose of that health committee is to, uh, monitor, uh, together with the Winthrop Department of Public Health and several administrators of the Winthrop School Department, the actual testing and caseloads that's going on right now within the town. And that, um, that group meets weekly just as, as a group to monitor what's going on with the positive test cases. The turn, the, uh, school year for the students was reduced by the Commissioner of Edu- Education to a hundred and seventy days under the terms of the memorandum of agreement that was approved at the September twenty-eighth meeting. The, the school year for the teachers remains the same. They had ten days of professional development and they're going to have a hundred and seventy days of, uh, teaching with the students. It was anticipated at the time the agreement was discussed and negotiated that on October fifth, that would be the target date and that was the date that the school system was going to bring back the special needs students into the schools. Um, I know that hasn't happened. Um, if there are, eh, I just, I just know that that was the target date based upon other issues that are going on. I know that that has not occurred. And I'm, I don't know when it will occur, so I would leave that up to the superintendent to comment further on when that will take place. Under the agreement, the district has a right to move individual groups, classrooms, schools back and forth between remote learning and hybrid learning based upon the current information. Um, the evaluation system that is part of the regular collective bargaining agreement remains in place. Teachers and other staff are going to be evaluated this year. The one thing that may be adjusted is how the evaluations take place in the timeline and that's depending upon the type of learning that's going on at the time the evaluations are actually done. As part of the agreement, there is a reference to, uh, personal protective equipment and that, and what the school's going to provide. That the teachers are required and the staff members are required to, uh, wear face masks. Um, student attendance and student grades are going to be maintained as they have in the past. Uh, stu- uh, e- each day, the teachers are required to actually take student attendance. Um, there is certain parts of the agreement that I won't go to in depth, but it actually identifies each particular type of staff member, whether it be a teacher, an ESP, a nurse, and describes specifically what is expected of an individual who's in one of those positions and what they're expected to do during the term that this agreement is in place. In addition, it puts in writing and clarifies the rights of the staff members to, uh, pay sick leave and, and any leave that they are entitled to under the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act that was passed by Congress and signed by the president. That was codified in this particular agreement. Um, the agreement is an eleven-page document. It's a comprehensive document. Um, and it was, again, negotiated over several sessions by both the Winthrop Teachers Subcommittee and sessions between the superintendent, some of her administrators, and the leadership of the WTA. Thank you.
Then unmute, Brian.
Yes, yes, I am on mute. Thank you, Mr. Matucci. Um, thank you, Mr. Hardnett. We appreciate your time. Um, I would ask, uh, that we entertain another motion to take, uh, the agenda out of order uh, to hear the superintendent's report, uh, and her update on the return, uh, to school plan.
So moved.
Uh, a motion by Mr. Capabianco. Can I get a second? By Mr. Matucci. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can you call the roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope? Ms. Swope?
Unmute yourselves, too.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Ms. Howard, can you bring us through your report? I think it's, uh, combined with your return school plan?
It is, thank you. And, um, tonight I'm going to do some reading, uh, just to make sure I don't miss any of the key points. Um, there's lots to be discussed, lots is, lots of things that have happened over the past several, um, weeks and, and months to, uh, with remote learning and with our decision-making relative to when we can switch to hybrid. If folks just remember back a little bit, hybrid learning was our plan from the beginning. Um, that was the direction that we had planned to take to open the schools. Um, and certainly going into the red, it turned the tables on us a little bit and we had to open up in remote. Though, um, if the school committee recalls, you have all committed to review the conditions of our schools and to hear updates from me so that on or before November thirteenth, there could be, um, some decisions relative to turning to a new, uh, phase of learning uh, in the hybrid model. So the school committee committed to that review, um, the current, and looking at the current conditions of our school to assess the ability, uh, to return in that hybrid model and doing so in accordance with both the back-to-school plan and the agreement that has been made between the Winthrop School Committee and the Winthrop Teachers Association. This is an update, uh, to, to assist you all with that process. As a reminder, there are many factors that go into the decision-making process. However, it's important to understand that transitioning from, um, one mode of learning to another, in our case, from remote to hybrid, has really three main factors involved in that decision-making. And I'm going to go through those for you. But, uh, one, number one would be the color-coded metric assigned to the town of Winthrop by the Department, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the fact that we will need to be in yellow at this point for a period of three weeks in order for us to transition, uh, to the remote hybrid. Unless we had extenuating circumstances that would support our Unless we had extenuating circumstances that would support our move prior to three consecutive weeks of stability within the yellow. The second important factor is that the Winthrop Public Schools must be able to sufficiently staff. All the classrooms when we switch from one mode of learning to another. And number three would be for the Winthrop Public Schools to identify the number of students prior to transitioning. Who will return in a hybrid model or for those students who will choose to remain fully remote. Address item number one, which is the metric, I'd like to provide you with an update on that. As we continue to focus on the transition to hy- the hybrid mode of learning as soon as possible, we review the metrics continuously. Regrettably, COVID nineteen continues to take its toll on our community. As of now, Winthrop continues to be designated as a red community reflective of that color-coded metric. The Department of Education, as you are all aware, collaborated with Massachusetts DPH. And they developed the expected learning model related to the color-coded metric for all Massachusetts public schools. It's my understanding after speaking with the Associate Commissioner of Education today. That the Department of Education is going to provide um some new guidance to us, hopefully by the beginning of next week. Which will allow for some element of flexibility relating to the red designation. I am hopeful that this will allow for some further flexibility in our future decision-making. I wanna be clear that with the designation of red, that is not the only data point. That the COVID nineteen Health and Safety Committee looks at uh when we look at these metrics on a daily basis. So here are some key points of of other points of data that we look at uh when looking at that designation. We look at the number of cases per day, including details such as the age of the fo- the age of. The people who are uh testing positive, relationships in between those people. And whether or not the identified cases are clusters or family-specific or students in the Winthrop Public Schools. We look at the percent positive trends within our community. We look at the number of testing tests conducted in Winthrop and how that is related to the positive outcomes. We look at trends in positive cases in our community, such as clusters. Such as those reflective of um events that may have happened. And we're also looking at where those positive cases are located in our residents in our town. We also take into account and the Department of Education has now asked us to start submitting this data. And that is the total number of students or staff that have tested positive in the community of Winthrop. We also, along with Meredith Hurley, who is our Town of Winthrop um he- Health Department Nurse. We look at and discuss the potential discrepancies in the weekly DTH reports. As compared to the data known to the Town of Winthrop. Although we have been designated uh as red for the last eight weeks. In looking at this data, we are hopeful that we are going to start seeing data that supports potential for improvement. And we're hopeful that we will soon be moving to a less restrictive designation of yellow. Once the community is designated as yellow. We will continue the process and enter into a three-week daily review of the COVID nineteen incident rates. In anticipation of our transition to a hybrid model of learning for all of our students. I included in your packet um tonight, the September fourteenth Department of Education uh guidance letter reflective of this. This process requires planning and flexibility as the incident rates. Can be affected by a minimal number of new cases, hence the reason we are looking at multiple points of data. I am hopeful that the guidance that is coming out of the Department of Education next week. Provides us with some additional flexibility for for communities that are in the red. As a district, we will continue to monitor the color-coded metric daily to assist with the anticipated ability to transition. And will also continue to look at all of the other other related data. To determine if the metrics itself is reflective of any extraordinary circumstance. Impacting our ability to move from red to yellow. The town is currently working with the Department of uh Public Health. To rectify any known discrepancies that may result in improving the weekly outcome of designation so that our students can get back to school. In addressing item number two, which was another critical component of our ability to transition, that is staffing. Staffing is a major component of our ability to transition to in-person learning. Our schools must be sufficiently staffed to be able to provide both remote and in-person instruction. We monitor our staffing needs daily and we continue to recruit staff to replace those who are unable to work. We are also, we also frequently communicate with our staff members. Who are approved to currently work from home due to their own medical needs to determine their ability to return to the classroom. When we've transitioned to in-person learning. We have recently worked with the Winthrop Teachers Association. To poll our staff to have an understanding of the number of staff. Who do not plan to return to work if and when a transition to hybrid is happening. A survey of our staff uh revealed that as of today, twenty-two staff members. Um, intend not to return to work. If in fact, we move to a hybrid learning model. These, all of these uh needs. All of these positions, if twenty-two staff members are not able to return to work and those for are for multiple reasons, could be for childcare. And they would be covered under FFCRA, which is the Families uh Coronavirus Act, which allows. Individuals to access twelve weeks of emergency leave to care for their own children. It also uh is reflective of maternity leaves that we have pending. And fourteen additional uh leaves in which folks need ADA accommodations. Uh, based on the coronavirus, the impact of the coronavirus, which may or may not enable them to return to work. To address item number three, our students returning to a hybrid model and our students electing to remain fully remote. We are in the process of developing a form to provide to parents to ask them to uh commit to either a hybrid or. Or a fully remote mode of learning so that we can determine what our cohorts will look like. Determining what the cohorts will look like will enable us to figure out whether or not we have an appropriate amount of staff. For when our students return to in-person learning. Once the staff is determined, we'll have a clear understand, staff and students are determined, we'll have a clear understanding. Of our ability and a better uh a better bit of information to be able to provide you with in terms of our ability to transition. We will need to provide families with a clear understanding of what both of these models will look like in terms of schedules. Synchronous versus asynchronous learning and instruction. Prior to asking them to choose a model, it would be unfair for us to ask a parent to commit. To whether or not they were gonna send their students back to hybrid learning or if they were choosing to keep them remote. If they didn't know what each one of those models was going to entail. Since returning in uh to since opening school up in a remote model, we have learned a lot. We have taken into consideration information from our parents by email and surveys. And we have worked closely with our staff and surveyed them to gather information relative to how the remote. Learning model is currently working. And how we may need to make changes as we transition to a hybrid where our students. The majority of our students will be in-person learning two days a week and at home remotely learning two and a half days a week. The remote instruction in both of these models will look a bit different than it currently does as teachers, when we return to a remote model. Will no longer be available to teach the majority of a- all of the students that are at home as in the model that we have right now. If we return to a hybrid and when we return to a hybrid model, teachers will be teaching both students at home. And in class in front of them in person. This is going to look different at the ma- elementary and secondary le- level, given the many factors associated with teaching. In two different places, two different environments. Some of those factors are our ability for students to stay engaged and balancing two environments, the classroom management of students. The technology capabilities or abilities um and technology that we have in our schools, which is different at the. Elementary school than it is at the um middle and high school. We are actively engaged in developing a clear understanding of what that day would look like. In both the hybrid and fully remote option and we will have that for parents prior to asking them to make such an important choice. As you are aware, we recently surveyed the staff and the parents to get feedback on the current remote model. With the goal to seek feedback on the things that we know we would be able to adjust. It is important to note that time on learning, the time and learning hours required by the state of Massachusetts are not negotiable. But adjustments to screen time, synchronous and asynchronous lessons, technology support and student support. Are those things that we uh can adjust. Staff at each grade level took this information, coupled with the many emails from families. And made informed decisions to adj- to adjust the current remote learning model at every grade level. We will continue to eval- evaluate the synchronous and asynchronous teaching and learning models. And we will continue to adjust particularly for our youngest learners. We are all learning as we go. Please know that we are listening to our families, staff and administration and we are doing our best to integrate. The many ideas around balancing screen time with techno- with non-technology activities. In conclusion, our highest students still remain the priority in being the first ones to return to school. As they may, they may do so even if the community remains red. The designation of high needs is based on a specific formula. And we have identified each student who qualifies in this category. Given the most recent information from the Department of Public Health. And after a review of the staffing required to appropriately service our high-needs group. We are develop, we have developed a recommendation in terms of bringing those stu- our students with special needs, our high-needs group. Back beginning uh October twenty-sixth. The phased-in plan, this will be a phased-in plan for our highest-needs students. The phased-in plan also includes recommendations. For returning our general education students to a hybrid mode of learning, potentially beginning on November twenty-third. It is important to understand that the proposed schedule must remain flexible. Given the unpredictability of the virus in our community, our staffing needs and the stability of us. Uh, getting into the yell- moving into the yellow and remaining there. As we move forward, families are going to be notified. Of the cohorts that their children will transition into once we survey them about their need. Every effort is going to be made to keep families who reside in the same home together. There are lots of moving parts when developing hybrid schedules and cohorts for students. The goal is to keep students in a specific cohort to lessen the ability of them to transition of uh to transition the virus to others. In the coming weeks, families are going to be asked to by the school department to inform us of their intent to have their students. Uh, in take the hybrid model or to choose to stay home and receive a full remote model. If families choose the full uh fully remote model. We we are recommending to the committee that they have the opportunity to transition to a hybrid at some point in the spring. The dates to opt into hybrid for learning have not yet been determined, but will be communicated to families as soon as possible. I wanna reemphasize the point that feedback from parents and staff last spring. Drove the development of the return-to-school remote model that you are, that students are in now. And we have made some adjustments to that based on our most recent information from parents. In closing, um I would say that we will all agree that nothing can replace in-person, the in-person learning experience. That our students and staff deserve and enjoy. It is far different when they are present and working together in our classrooms than when they are at home. It is critical to understand that regardless of the dates that the school committee may set to return our students to in-person learning. We reme- we need to remain flexible and we need to rely on being in the yellow and have appropriate staffing. To pl- uh to keep our students safe in the hybrid model. Our buildings are ready, our students are ready and our staff is ready. And we still have a bit of work to do in terms of making sure we can get our students in safely. That is an update on where we are at and it is, although you may think it was a long update. Um, it certainly is not, there are endless amounts of moving parts and conversation and work. That is going in to getting our students um back into school. I am hopeful after my discussions today with the Associate Commissioner of Education, Rob Curtin. That the Department of Education is hearing us in that um the designation and the metrics, albeit well-respected. Um, they were developed by the Department, Mass Department of Public Health. Uh, in collaboration with the Infectious Disease Specialist in Massachusetts. Um, and w- we respect those metrics. Uh, but we believe the Department of Education is beginning to hear that uh having these designations has locked quite a few. School districts uh into place. And so we're hopeful that by next week, we will see uh a document that allows us to have some flexibility. And that the expectation that a district in red um remains fully remote may be lessened. That in combination with our ability to fully staff our schools uh will be the next step that we will be able to take. Uh, or the committee will be able to take in planning to return our students. Um, a couple of other important key items uh in our needs um. High-needs group of students, we have decided to do a phased-in approach, bringing in um approximately. Uh, fifty students designated as the highest, our highest-needs students for in-person learning. Uh, we would like to begin that process on the twenty-sixth. And again, that's a a somewhat of a tentative date and originally. Um, obviously, originally we wanted to do it by the fifth. Uh, metrics would not allow us to to do that uh in combination with our staffing. Um, as of last week, we were hoping we could do it on the nineteenth, we are down. Um, seven staff members as of the beginning of last week and those seven staff members. Are tied to that highest-needs group. As of today, we have replaced four of the seven. Um, and we are confident that we will be able to uh fully staff that by the twenty-sixth. The nineteenth date is um cutting it somewhat close uh for a few reasons. We need to uh make the teachers aware, um give them two weeks' notice as part of the MOU, which we have done. Uh, or plan to do after the school committee meeting tonight to let them know that that is our plan. Um, with the understanding that the fully staffing of those classrooms is critical to the safety of those students. There will be another phased-in recommended approach uh that we'll present to the school committee as well for uh phase two of that group. Going from two days a week um to their uh original four, four days per week. So initially on the twenty-sixth, starting our highest-needs group on Mondays and Tuesdays and remaining remote. Uh, on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. They'll have a second phase in on or about November ninth. In where that same highest group uh will add in-person learning on Thursdays and Fridays. And the Wednesdays across the school district are going to remain fully remote. With the hybrid model of of students, just to give a little overview about that. At this point in time and and again, looking into the future with the understanding that. Our staffing would be fully in place and that we would be able to be out of the red and into the yellow. Uh, designation for at least three weeks. Uh, also hoping that the new guidance from the department will allow for some more flexibility in that area. We would be recommending that that phase in learning of hybrid uh begin uh on the twenty-third of November. In which all students would return in a hybrid model reflective of the approved. Uh, return-to-school plan that was submitted to the Department of Education. Again, there have been some adjustments made to that plan that will be communicated to parents very clearly uh before that date. That's that's a lot of information to take in, I think a takeaway from all of it. Um, is that we are now actively seeking a plan that will have uh dates. That again, people have to understand that those dates have to remain flexible. And we have to be able to be fully staffed uh and have the ability not uh to be. Uh, in the red and if we are in the red, hopefully the guidance from the department will allow for some flexibility. Um, this committee does not have to, uh you made the commitment to make a decision by November thirteen. On um whether or not uh you're in agreement with the move to. All students into the hybrid plan, the special ed students, us high-needs students. Um, that has been, that was part of the original vote, um I don't believe the committee needs to vote on that. And um today is the thirteen. And today is the thirteenth of Nov- of October. This is my, not the first update, because the committee has had several updates about remote learning, but this is really the first update to talk about the potential to transition to a hybrid. We still have until November thirteenth for the committee to make a decision on that. And I am happy to entertain questions, which I am sure there are many. There's so much information to provide. And, and this is ongoing conversation with either individual school committee members or subcommittees, and certainly an ongoing conversation that's happening daily with the Department of Public Health in Winthrop, the town health nurse in Winthrop, as well as all of our staff, including our administrative team and the critical component of the teachers. So I'm sure people have questions, Brian, that's up to you. I know I have, I actually, if I could, just as part of my report, if I, I know I have Meredith Hurley on the line. Meredith and I speak every day. We talk about all of those data points that I discussed in this report that are important to our understanding of our community as a whole. And I would like to have Meredith just give a quick update as far as the daily incident rates in our community, so that folks can hear from the medical professional in our community, which I one hundred percent am not. I'll ask Meredith if she could speak for a minute.
Hi, y'all. I am just pulling up my numbers, so I know that we're kind of on this, on this routine of, of, you know, approaching Wednesdays, knowing that Wednesdays is when the data is released, where where it tells our designation. We, we definitely have an uptick that has happened around last weekend. It has settled down a bit now, but it still will be included in this, this dataset that's being released. So by my, by my calculations, our incidence rate will be higher based off of the nine cases that were released in a thirty-six-hour period last weekend. I'm, I'm, I, I'm saying that we're going to have about thirty cases on our dataset, which will put our incidence rate somewhere around eleven. The state might have us at thirty-two. There are two discrepancies within that dataset by my calculations. But on the flip side, we haven't had any cases released today. So all of this is, is, you know, it has definitely slowed. The state overall has also had a large increase of positive cases that have been reported within the last ten to fifteen days. So I think that we're just trending like the rest of the state has been trending. So that's kind of where we're at. Our current, our current amount of isolated folks, we've had four hundred and twenty-four confirmed cases, and, and right now currently, we have eighteen cases isolated here in town. We don't think that it's indicative of a cluster that's formed, or that there's a pattern to it necessarily, but a, a heavy burden has been placed on households where adults and children have been, have tested positive. We've also had, last week, we had, I think, five, five cases under the age of eighteen this week. We're only reporting two cases under the age of eighteen, actually just one case under the age of eighteen. So it's, you know, this is part of our surveillance that changes, and we just kind of watch where the patterns are going. And like Superintendent Howard said, that's pretty much why we talk at least once a day, usually multiple times a day, either with her or also with her staff, her nursing staff. So we've been in constant contact. But I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has them to the best of my ability.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, Julie.
Meredith, a couple of weeks ago, so the last two weeks, we've sort of been holding steady right at that sort of red-yellow line. This week, our daily incidence rate was, or I should say, last week as of the seventh, was eight-point-three, and the week prior was eight-point-zero. And it was my understanding that the week we were eight-point-zero, there were a couple cases there that were mistakenly counted, and I could be wrong, so I'm, I'm looking for clarification from you on that. And if that is accurate, that those cases were in fact mistakenly counted in the eight-point-zero, then we would have in fact been in the yellow that week. And, and the only reason why I bring that up, because, you know, once we're in the yellow, we're supposed to trigger this three-week wait period where we, you know, monitor the, the data so that we can start making the appropriate plans. So I guess this is probably a twofold question, because I'm curious if, if we start the yellow, and then we go back in the red, and then we have to start yellow again, now we're looking at, you know, three weeks becomes five weeks, becomes eight weeks. So I guess, Meredith, that's a sort of a two-part question for you as to how we, you know, first, is that accurate that, you know, those numbers were incorrect and would have put us in the yellow? And then two, what's the recommendation going forward on how we, you know, start the count, stop the count, and start the count again?
My, my calculation, yes, we had some discrepancies. I don't think that the, I don't, I don't think the state necessarily is used to people kind of going back and saying, no, like, they don't know how to take those off of our case counts for whatever reason. So I'm sorry that I have not been able to actually remedy that with their numbers and with, with our numbers. But what I have been doing is tracking our daily incidence rate for that reason with, with very specific documentation on whatever discrepancies. Up until this past Friday, we haven't had discrepancies in the last two or three weeks. We have kind of cleared that, which was good. And the discrepancies this week, one happened because it was just an erroneous address and was sent back to Chelsea, Chelsea Border Health. And the second one was a misspelling of somebody's name who had gotten retested after being tested positive. And so, you know, we flagged that and haven't reported that here. So watching the linear trend of where, where we are, by my calculations, yes, we would have dipped down. But then, you know, now we're so significantly back in the red, we weren't, we weren't sustaining that downward trend. And now we're, you know, we're kind of back up. And, you know, I think that that's what Superintendent Howard is also looking to have some clarification from Desi as to how much we can, we can look at these numbers, and what, what do our trends need to exactly be? You know, I seeing, seeing where we're at right now with this, with this incidence rate, which, you know, isn't, it's a very good metric that I do believe in, and I do think that it tells a story of the community as to the risk level. But does it tell us the whole picture? No. And, but we, you know, looking at the age demographics on a daily basis, but then also calculating and watching them over a period of time so that we, we can be mindful and be careful about the reopening. But, you know, I, we are definitely looking for some guidance as to what other layers we can appropriately add into this decision-making.
Yeah, one of the, oh, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say to, to your, to your point, Meredith and I have had discussions agnaudium about, you know, whether or not the Department of Public Health is going to listen and, and take Meredith's, you know, real-time data and correct the issues. I think my discussions with the commissioner two weeks ago, and then the associate commissioner today in the follow-up was, you know, really surrounding some of those key points in our inability to get out of the red. And so I'm hopeful that this guidance has been weeks of not just me, but other superintendents asking those very questions, like, what, what if we are in red, and then we go to yellow, and then the next week we're, we're in red? You're not giving us any guidance. You're saying we need to look at three weeks of data and to move, when you move from one color to the next. Very similar if you're yellow and your community turns red. You have, you, they want you to sit in yellow and look at it for three weeks and determine the trends before you make the move to go fully remote with kids, so as not to use kids, you know, and, and transition kids like yo-yos back and forth. But it is very frustrating when there is a mistake, that that mistake could have got us into the yellow. And, you know, hopefully this guidance is going to allow for some more flexibility in not having to prove just an extenuating circumstance that has to be pretty clear, and give us a little bit more local discretion, especially being in the red.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my follow-up question to that is, you know, what is, like, why can't we, I mean, all right, let's say we, we agree, we have extenuating circumstances. We can always, you know, say we have extenuating circumstances. But what is, why are we beholden to the red beyond that? Like, I, I'm not-
Because at the end of the day, when we transition and we are in the red, in the moment that we're in, the Department of Education, directly from the commissioner and not just from listening to, you know, various meetings, has said, you must, if you look at it, it says there only, their expectation is remote. There's no remote, or you have another choice. And when I asked point-blank, if we were to move into a, a hybrid while we're in the red, and don't forget, we've been in the red for eight weeks, and not supporting us going in a good direction. It was for a minute, but it's not now. That explanation has to be given to the Department of Education. The school committee would have to explain, why did you make this decision? If you made this decision because you didn't believe in DPH's metric, and you didn't believe in what the Department of Education was requiring without using the word require, expectation without any option is pretty, pretty telling without using the word require. You, you'd have to explain yourself. And the people that have to explain themselves is the committee, and the committee's decision would be based on my recommendation, which is daily review of the data with the Department of Public Health nurse, and then correlating that to what's being expected by the people who created that metric. And I've talked to, to the Department of Ed a number of times about the metric and who created it, and the Infectious Disease Specialist and the Department of Public Health, and whether or not they considered that they were communities in the Commonwealth that were not all the same size. And so this metric seems to be a one-size-fits-all. And that's why in our community and several others, people are looking not just at that number, but at multiple other numbers to formulate a reason, a good reason to not go with the recommendation of the Department of Public Health and the Department of Education. I mean, it's not much more involved than that. There, there has to be answers at the end of the day as to why you did it, and why you, you have decided to go that way. And I know there's an opinion out there that the Department of Education can't do anything. You don't work for the Department of Education. We do. And, and school systems are run by the Department of Education. So although people might not agree with the metric, it, it, it's, it's a, an expectation, and that we are told that we need to be following it. Until there's some relief to that, and believe me, we're not just saying, okay, we'll, we'll wait till we're out of the red. We're looking for extenuating circumstances that are provable to return to a hybrid model. And that's based on our expertise here as educators in, in our nursing staff.
Ms. Smoke, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, either Meredith or Lisa, if we go back to a hybrid model, and I don't recall what your criteria are for putting kids back into a remote circumstance by classroom with a particular number of cases. Can you review that for me? What happens if we get back into a hybrid model, and then kids get sick in particular classrooms?
So Meredith, I mean, I could talk just, if you want to talk about the, the CDC recommendations or guidance, but it's, it's based on, and I'll let Meredith do the, the, the healthcare piece of it, but it's based on where it happens, how many people are involved, and the contact tracing involved that will lead us to a determination if we are closing a classroom, or if we are isolating a, a specific group of students. That's why we're doing cohorts so that we're able to do this. Or if we have to close a whole school or the entire school district, and it's totally based on the contact tracing. But I'll let Meredith pick it up from there.
Yeah, so it, it, like Superintendent Howard is saying, it depends on, you know, we're gonna, we have, we have these guidelines, and we have these protocols that we're following. In my experience, every, every case is, is unique. So there needs to be some sort of ability to look at each case specifically and make the best determination for that case and for that classroom. So, you know, I think it's hard to say that at the high school level, that should be exactly compared to the preschool special needs population, right? So like, in that, in that classroom, if there's a, if there's a confirmed case, everybody in that classroom is going to be quarantined, because we cannot guarantee that there is not close exposure. At the high school level, we have a better understanding that potentially there isn't close exposure if all of the, all of the protocols have been maintained. So, you know, once we see, so, so with your question being, when do we kind of shut down, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. So if there's one case in a classroom at a high school level, for example, and we determine that there wasn't close proximity, and there was consistent masking and things like that, that's a little bit different than the preschool special needs population. They're going to be, you know, that, that will be an automatic fourteen-day quarantine within that population. So, and then, you know, if we see, if we start to believe that there's spread, so spread is something that we want to prevent. So, you know, isolated cases within certain schools, within certain classrooms, we would, we all kind of need to expect that, that there will be positive cases at some point throughout the course of this before a vaccine. And so, you know, as long as there's not spread, then we can contain it and deal with it. Spread is, is, is the problem, that, you know, spread is, is what we're going to be fighting against, truthfully. And then that's when that would kind of shift it into a more, you know, we'd be looking at shutting down entire schools.
And, and I think the protocols that we have for responding to any information that we receive on a positive case are very specific. One of our, we have a COVID-designated need in each building, which is our nurses in each building. We also have a COVID-medical waiting room in each building that will be staffed by another medical professional, whether that's a certified nursing assistant or another registered nurse, to help make sure that we don't allow for that spread while we are trying to figure things out. And the Department of Health Nurse, Meredith, is engaged and involved in every single incident of a positive case that we have. So we have a tiered system of, once we find out, who gets notified next. We have very specific notification letters that would be going to families, and immediate notification process that goes to the Department of Public Health. All of that gets piggybacked with a major cleaning protocol that we have in place, ready to go when needed, which is beyond our daily cleaning and our weekly electrostatic cleaning protocols that we have. So people can't, maybe, maybe don't understand how that might work in the school and how you might figure it out. It's a very systematic process that is not just sitting with a decision of a principal.
Thank you, Ms. Smoke. Any further questions? Mr. Batucci?
So, in listening to what's gone, you know, listening here tonight, I have the utmost confidence in Lisa and her staff. However, I think we need to get some kids back in the building now, sooner than later. Small group, highest needs, and I don't want to wait till the twenty-sixth. I think that we should ask the, the teachers if they're willing to do a week the nineteenth, and ask them if they'd be able to do a small group, either at the high school or at the Fort Banks or whatever school, or all, all schools where the highest need kids are, the fifty or so kids there are. If we have the staff, I'd like to see that happen on the nineteenth. So I would be in favor of seeing kids back in the building, small group of kids, see how it goes. If there's an issue, we do what we have to do. It sounds to me that the building air quality is good. We've had that tested. We have our cleaning protocols in place. We can social distance. Wear the masks. They should be safe. Let's get this started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Capbiano.
Yes, before this, right before this meeting, I had a short collaborative meeting and, and that's in Chelsea and we're in the red and, and some of those students will be starting to, to go back uh, fairly soon. So I agree with Mr. Matucci and I'm supportive of having our highest needs students um, return. Uh, just a, a comment on something that was said earlier, I don't think this should be, uh, having, going back to school should not be a staffing issue. I think this has to be a public health issue, we need to stick to all the guidelines. If we're in yellow, then we're hybrid, if we're green, we go back, and if we're red, we stay out. Has to be public health, that's it, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Capbiano. Any further questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you, um, this is for uh, Superintendent Howard. Um, I've, I, i- in reviewing like back to school plans for different communities, um, Boston Public Schools, I thought had a, a pretty solid plan where they did a phased in approach where they worked on getting their most highest needs students in first, followed by their next highest needs, which they, you know, identified as K through three, followed by, you know, I think it was four through eight, and then high school students with different dates set for each of those um, students to re-enter um, the school. Is there a possibility that we can put something together like that with dates associated with them for goals? For which we can, we can get these kids back?
So tearing, so the, the special needs uh, group, our highest needs uh, group, definitely and has always been a plan to bring them back?
No, I realize that, yeah.
And then the next plan that we had, um, and that what I was recommending um, tonight was returning the re- uh, all students back uh, at the same time. If the school committee wants to um, visit, tearing that out, I do, I have looked at many school plans in which um, they consider the uh, younger elementary school kids, kindergarten. Uh, our preschool, by the way, uh, preschool is um, a hundred percent students with uh, special needs. As of right now, we have no general education students in that particular program. So they will be part of the first return of students. Uh, but if the school committee wants to visit a different tiered in model, a different phased in model, bringing in say K to uh, two students, one week and then a couple of weeks later, the four to eight, and then the um, you know, the nine through twelve students. Uh, that's certainly something that we would be very happy to look at. Uh, it would be different than bringing all the students back at the same time. Uh, but certainly if this committee wants us to take a look at being able to do that type of a phased in model versus the one uh, that we've been planning for uh, all along, I'm, I'm happy to bring that back to the administrators to look at, uh, if that's what the committee, that would like us to do.
Well, I mean, my thought around that is, is, you know, if we're going to push the envelope and say we have extenuating circumstances and we want to send kids back and we want to get kids back in school and we're in the red, then potentially a phased approach may be the way to go. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, I, you know, obviously I'd love to see all the kids back in school at the same time, but.
So if you're, you're talking about if we can't get, if we can't seem to get out of the red?
Yes, exactly, sorry.
A model in, in which K to three would return the, obviously the youngest population, which is um, tradi- traditionally the way other schools are approaching it. I don't know that other schools are approaching that, that are in the red, the seven communities that we've been dealing with have been right there with us eight weeks in a row. Um, six of tho- five of those seven communities are not.
Sorry to interrupt, I believe Medford is doing that.
Medford is doing what?
They, they allow their k- kindergarten through third grade have gone back first. Sorry.
We go through the chair, just so that we're not talking over each other.
Chair, Paul, point of information, I believe. Third grade.
I understand.
So speaking specifically though, to the communities that are red, the surrounding communities around us, Lynn, Chelsea, Everett, uh, Malden and Revere um, are not returning as of last week, that may have changed this week if they've had school committee meetings. They are not uh, returning their high needs kids to school while they're in the red. Um, and I've said this from the get go, eh, we have been uh, always, it's always been known that when it is safe to do so in a community that is in the red, if they feel as though they can reasonably bring back the high needs population while still in the red, that is allowable um, and, and um, and agreed upon by the Department of Education. What is not being uh, recommended is to return all students while the community is still in the red. So if we remain in the red, um, you know, certainly if, if, what I'm hearing you say is if we stay stuck where we are, we're going to remain in the red, is it possible to visit, to revisit returning not just the high needs meeting students with um, special needs back to the building, but also incorporating uh, kindergarten and potentially first and second grade, or at least the, the early childhood um, students while we were in the red?
Correct.
And, and again, as, you know, I was hopeful after my conversation with the Associate Commissioner today, um, that that may be some of the flexibility that they're going to allow us because um, I, I believe it's been heard loud and clear that there are many districts that want their uh, highest needs population and their younger students to come in first. Doesn't make the secondary people very happy, so it doesn't make the high school population or the middle school population um, very happy when they're not part of that consideration. But um, the data would, you know, most definitely support the foundation skills that students are uh, learning K to three or K to two are far different than what's being learned, you know, at the high school level. Um, so if, if that's the case, I, I'd like to, I would recommend the committee hold off and, and wait to see what is coming out in terms of that guidance next week and then certainly um, revisit that topic. I think folks would be open to doing that at the administrative level anyway.
Well, my thought too, beyond that is if we're in the red and these, you know, the, the younger kids go back first and then we're able to get the next group of grades in and there's no issues, then we can get the next group of grades in and there's no issues, you know? Even if we are in the red, if we're showing and demonstrating success with that without incident, then, you know, it's, it's a successful metric and it would encourage us to be able to open the higher grades, you know?
Can, can we go through the chair so that we're not just talking over each other?
Oh, sorry, I just thought we were having a conversation.
Ms. Howard?
I was, I was done.
Is there any further questions for uh, Meredith Hurley or Lisa Howard, Superintendent Howard? Hearing none?
Chairman, no, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Batucci.
Uh, I don't have a question, what I'd like to do is to make a motion, if I could, to instruct the superintendent to uh, at least start the small group of high needs kids back in school on the nineteenth.
Provided that there is sufficient staffing available, it's safe to do so?
Of course, providing that everything that needs to be done is done. And, and that means uh, if the teachers are willing to, to waive the two weeks notice and whatever else is in the uh, MOU. Uh, and also, I mean, I know it was safe to go back as far as cleanliness, masks, social distance. So I would make a motion to uh, instruct the superintendent to begin the high need students back in the schools on the nineteenth.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Capbiano. Any discussion?
May I ask a question on the motion?
Excuse me?
May I ask a question on the motion?
Yes, it's.
I would just like to make sure that parents, uh, these parents have the option to not send their children if they feel that's in the best interest at the time.
I believe that will be in place.
And if I may?
Yes.
If I understand the motion correctly, so I know what sort of we're getting into. There, the, the fact is that our holding us back from going in full, you know, our full group of fifty students in on the nineteenth, um, as I explained, had to do with staffing um, and the need for that staffing based, based on the population of students we're serving, um, as well as um, just another piece of information that we know at this level that other folks may not loo- know. There's also transportation, making sure we have transportation uh, up and ready for those students and the notification to parents. Um, and we have not yet had our, because we're waiting for this meeting, have not yet had our discussion uh, with this particular group of parents to be able to fill them in on everything that they need to know about returning to school, the self checks, protocols that we have in place. Um, I will certainly uh, meet with Jen O'Connell um, tomorrow and then I can update the committee. And I'm sure I'll have fifty parents calling me tomorrow to ask me if the students are starting on the nineteenth and I won't be able to give them an answer until I make sure that the teachers are willing to forego the two weeks notice, that the staffing is in place, that transportation is in place and that parents have been duly notified uh, and have their questions uh, answered uh, appropriately. Um, and then I can report back to the committee chair who can uh, report back uh, to everybody else who have the progress on that over the next two days, if that makes sense. Just to give you a sense of, of, you know, the nineteenth, totally fine. If that's what the committee uh, is going to tell us to do, that's fine. I just want to make sure people understand that there may be a few um, reasons that that may not be able to happen for every student uh, of the group if we don't have the sufficient staffing or if the, if the staff itself that's here um, is not going to forego the two week notice.
Mr. Boncorry? Where the chairman, I, I would like to amend that motion uh, because I, I don't think we should be putting uh, pressure on uh, a superintendent. She's already claimed she thinks it should happen on the twenty sixth. I think we should leave it up to the superintendent and after consulting with uh, healthcare professionals and working with uh, staff rather than us as a committee making uh, a deadline for her. I think that we should leave it up to her. So I'd like to amend that and give the permission to open on the nineteenth uh, to uh, Superintendent uh, Howard rather than directing her to do that.
We'll make every effort to do so, just to clarify, trying not to open on the nineteenth. Um, we'll make every effort to do so, although it may not be every group of students of the fifty.
Can I get a second on Mr. Boncorry's amendment?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Okay, Ms. Smoke?
Just on the basis of safety, I, I, I won't be voting for this, but I, I do appreciate, I do so appreciate, I know parents wanting to get their kids back to school. But I think that given that we're still in the red and then pushing this forward it, at this particular time is not something that I can support.
Yes, Mr. Batucci.
Yeah, I don't, it's not, I mean, I'd like to see all fifty or so of these kids back in the schools, but if that's not possible, whatever section, school, um, whatever it is, I just want to see kids back in the buildings um, on the nineteenth. If it's only the high school or it's only the Fort Banks School or the middle, whatever school it is or if they often go back, the fifty kids, fine. Um, so I would vote for the amended motion, it's fine, but uh, whatever, whatever can go back on the nineteenth, I want to see back.
Mr. Batucci, you, are you withdrawing your motion so that Mr. Boncorry's motion will place? That it's not a directive, but the desire of the school committee that it moves forward at, at, at a pace that is allowable under the agreement with the Teachers Association as far as uh, the two week notice period, that it's safe to do so and staffing levels are correct?
I would withdraw my motion if every effort was made to go in on the nineteenth and then no later than the twenty sixth.
Okay. Mr. Boncorry?
If he does want to do that, that's fine.
I, I don't think I, I said anything about no later than the twenty sixth, but I think we have to give it uh, two weeks. I want to see everybody back at school and Lisa and I had this discussion two, three weeks ago about bringing the kids back in, first kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and we have the school ability to open the Fort Banks and then open the Cummings and then open the middle school. We have that ability because we have so many schools that we could possibly do that. But I don't want to put pressure on uh, Lisa or direct her to do it because we are not the healthcare professionals. The healthcare professionals and Lisa are working together to get the school open as soon as possible. I want all the kids back in school as soon as possible. But let's do it conscientiously and let the healthcare professionals and the professional school people, being uh, the superintendent and your administrators, make the decision.
So is the motion currently is that it is the desire of the school committee not to, to move forward with, if, if capable of doing so safely and within the, the uh, within the MOU with the two week notice period, if it's safe to do so and the metrics are correct, that we can move forward and the, and the preference is that we have that completed by the nineteenth? Is that what the motion is?
Correctly, I don't want us waiting till November thirteenth, eh, as we previously had done, let's get going.
Excuse, yeah, right. So is that, is that the motion that the, that we are directing the school uh, superintendent to make every effort to bring forth the school, the, the high needs students into the school system, if possible, by uh, October nineteenth? Is that the motion, Mr. Boncorry?
The motion is to leave it up to her, but she can begin on October nineteenth if she so wishes, rather than us waiting until the twenty sixth or November thirteenth.
Now with all the back and forth, I've lost track myself. Do we have a second on that motion? I believe Jen Powell seconded that motion.
Second.
I haven't withdrawn my motion yet because we, we are not sticking with a date.
May I ask a question?
Point of order? If we have an amendment, do we not vote first on that amendment?
Uh, correct, so will we vote on Mr. uh, Boncorry's amendment, which I just stated? Patty, roll call vote, please?
I'm not clear on what I'm voting on, I'm sorry.
We are voting on, Mr. Boncorry, state your motion, your, your amendment again?
My motion was that we allow uh, the superintendent and our public health advisor and as professional administrators decide when it is safe for us to open, whether it be the nineteen to twenty sixth or so on.
Uh, may I, may I, may I comment on that, please?
Yeah.
If it, if the school committee is asked to vote on whether or not a school is opening, which, or going hybrid, right, which is what we voted on and what we have voted on in the past. We voted on hybrid, then we voted on remote. Now we're, now we're not able to vote on whether or not the kids are go- the high risk kids are actually going to, to, to go back to school. I'm just confused, who's, who, who's voting and, and what are we doing here?
The motion by Mr. Matucci was to, to direct the school superintendent to bring the high need students back in by October nineteenth instead of October twenty sixth, wanting to go forward.
Yes.
The scenario, that was the first motion. It was then amended, uh, an amendment was filed by Mr. Boncorry. I thought the motion had been withdrawn by Mr. Matucci and it's not because a date was not added by Mr. Boncorry. However, we have to also be mindful of the fact that there is an agreement in place requiring a two week notice. And we also have to be sure that the metrics are correct in accordance with that MOU. And if they are not, then Lisa cannot move forward. So we have to be mindful of all those things, so we can direct all the things we want to direct, but at the end of the day, we have agreements that we, we have to live by and we also have the metrics that are in place. So I understand what Mr. Boncorry is trying to say and I understand what Mr. Matucci is trying to say. And it is frustrating, we all want to get everyone back to school as quickly as possible and phased in. But the bottom line is, there are a lot of hoops that we have to jump through in a very short period of time. And you have to bear in mind that you also have parents, that if we tell them this is going to happen on this date and they don't have the arrangements in place to deal with it and it does not occur, we've got a problem for those students. And we have to make sure we have the staffing levels. So I have no problem with the motion to direct the superintendent to make every effort to bring this forward and get us in by that date. But if we can't get it in by that date, we may have missed the, the deadline, two week notice. So I, 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 I would ask that we work together on this motion so that it is directing the school superintendent to make every effort to hit our goal, October nineteenth date. And, and hopefully the latest at the twenty sixth, but to give notice in a timely manner if it's required to do so.
Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Batucci?
I would amend the motion to say the nineteenth, no later than the twenty sixth.
Provided that.
Provided, of, of course, I mean, we, if we don't have any teachers there or staff, then we can't go back. But everything has to fall in line, that, that, if there's not enough teachers, uh, then. But everything has to fall in the way. If that if that if there's not enough teachers, uh, then, you know, like you said, we can say whatever we want.
Right.
Or if or if you notify these parents and they say we're not sending our kids back in, okay, what what can you do?
Oh, my God. So
I want to see, I think the kids are going to come back. I think there's going to be teachers there. I think it's it's safe to go back and I'm saying that's my motion.
So your current motion, do we have a second on Mr. Batucci's amended?
I second, Mr. Powell.
I do too. I third it.
Third. Mr. Boncorry.
And and my amendment was to not make it a directive mandatory to the superintendent to do it by the either the nineteenth or the twenty sixth. But based on the metrics and on the health and on the staff, let it be her decision. That is my amendment. And that was what the amendment was before.
Okay, this is, again, I just want to clarify, this is for the high need students for this date. Is that correct?
Yes, determines the high need students, the superintendent.
Correct.
So she will be determined.
So I think the motions are basically the same in that we're directing the superintendent to make all efforts to bring the high needs population back into schools on or before, well, October nineteenth and no later than October twenty sixth, if possible.
My amendment takes out the deadline of October twenty sixth.
So we'll vote on your amendment. Do we? Is there any further discussion on Mr. Boncorry's amendment? Ms. Swope.
Am I correct that we have to be out of the red for three weeks?
No, Mr. Chairman.
High needs population.
According to Ms. Howard, it's it that does not apply to the high need.
Thank you.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yeah, I would just like to repeat, as I said, the short collaborative is in Chelsea. It is red. It is one of the worst in the state and their high needs students are beginning to go back in the, I believe in a week or so. I voted on that before this meeting. So it's appropriate if we follow those guides and do what they're doing by having our high um, risk students go back as soon as possible.
I I don't disagree with you, but I think we have to be mindful of what is in place and the hurdles that need to be overcome uh, to make all this happen. Again, we have we we have to have a two week notice, which does not bring us to that date. Uh, there's a lot to consider there. So I I I'm going to call the question unless someone has further discussion on Mr. Boncorry's motion of not having a date. Ms. Uh, Hames, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Barry?
I want a date and I want a deadline, so I'm voting no.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
No.
Mr. Batucci?
Nope.
Ms. Swope?
No, for but op for opposite reasons.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. So the motion was defeated. Mr. Batucci's motion, again, if you could word it again, Mr. Batucci, so we're all on the same page for what your motion is.
I would like to instruct the superintendent to open the building to the high needs kids, the high school, middle school, Fort Banks and Cummings if possible. And if we have staffing and all of our guidelines are met, no later than the nineteenth, no later than the twenty sixth.
Okay. We had a second on that, so we're going to wait. Any further discussion on this matter?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Powell.
So if if possible, on both of that, so if on the twenty sixth, we don't have enough staff and or there are other extenuating circumstances, she still has, she still has that flexibility.
Mr. Batucci, and I believe that's what his intent was of his motion, that we make every effort to hit those goals, and I believe we will.
I believe we'll, I believe we'll hit the goal, so I I we shouldn't have a problem. But obviously, if there's an issue, what can you do?
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. A roll call, roll vote, please, Patty?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Mr. Boncorry?
Uh, no.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Batucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
No.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on and back to our normal agenda. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of our September twenty eighth meeting? Motion by Mr. Capabianco. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, by Ms. Swope. Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Batucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Ms. Powell? Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, financial and business procedures. Um, I need a motion for warrant SPW twenty one dash five, the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Batucci. Question on the warrant. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please, for the record?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Batucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Can I get a motion, please, for payroll warrant SPW twenty one dash oh five, the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope. Can I get a second? Any discussion on the warrant? Patty, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Epstein.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Batucci?
Name.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Okay, we also have a very generous donation of five thousand dollars from Anthony and Marcella Feudo. Uh, the donation is to make up for the shortfall for the yearbooks, some, my understanding is. Um, can I get a motion to accept that generous donation from the Feudos?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Batucci. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very generous. Patty, can we please get a roll call vote on that donation?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncorry?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Batucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes. And again, thank you to the Feudos. That's a very generous donation to the senior class yearbooks. Uh, moving on, buildings and grounds, there are none. Uh, subcommittee reports, I see none. Uh, homeschool application vote. Ms. Galvin, um, have you reviewed the applications and what is your recommendation?
We do not have any new ones this week. Um, you've approved all that have been put forward to this date.
Okay. Personnel, Ms. Howard, do we have any personnel matters to report on?
We do. So we have um, no appointments um, today. We have a resignation, one resignation from Lauren Hurt, who was an ESP at the Athertie Cummings, and that has been um, posted. And hopefully, we can find somebody to fill that. Um, and at the high school, uh, Mr. Crombie has posted um, things such as yearbook advisor, internal postings, lead teachers, um, SAT coordinators, uh, class advisors and the like. And at this point, we have no leave of absence to report.
Okay, uh, new business. We've already handled the return to school update. We took the unfinished business out of order. Just looking through, we jumped around so much, I want to make sure we don't miss any votes. Uh, superintendent evaluation is more unfinished business. I believe, Mr. Batucci, that we were suspending that uh, for a short period during uh, this COVID situation. Um, public comment. Patty, do we have any public comment, any further public comment?
Just look here. Yes, we do. We have um, Shannon. Shannon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Shannon Poulos precinct eight three. Um, first off, I just wanted to thank our um, superintendent and our school committee members, the ones that voted in support of bringing at least some population of our children back to school for being um, open to the fact that, you know, we are in fact not inflexible here. We do in fact have um, options. I I think that the narrative around us being bound by um, you know, a a mandate um, is is different than an expectation and a recommendation. I think for the lawyers on our school committee, um, those are really important words. And I think that um, I I think we need to continue to push the envelope there and that to the extent that we don't get our kids back in school, I think we actually need a a legal binding opinion um, from Dussie that 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 says why, in fact, we can't. I I think anything less than that is unacceptable. Um, the second thing I would just say is that um, the the um, the other thing I heard that was pretty resounding was the appropriate staffing. Um, and I think that what we need to really understand as a community is what the administration is doing and the school committee is doing to replace the twenty-two teachers who will not come back if we go hybrid. Um, that feels like the long pole on this decision, um, and not one rule that that will happen quickly. Um, so might not get an answer tonight, but I think it's imperative that our community understands what um, the administration's doing to fulfill that need. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. We appreciate your call. Any further public comment, Patty?
Yes, we have Jenna Dorr.
Hi, can you hear?
Yep.
Um, my name is Jenna Dorr and I would just like to take this moment to speak on behalf of the senior class and the high school to thank Mr. Anthony Feudo and Ms. Marcella Feudo for their generous donation to our yearbooks. Sabrina is always part of everything the class of twenty twenty-one does and will forever be our classmate. Their support is much appreciated and we are very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any further public comment?
Yes, we have Courtney Staff.
I'm meeting this up, Courtney.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. So um, just in listening to the meeting tonight, I um, want to piggyback on what Shannon had commented about a few minutes ago with the, as as far as the staffing. So I'm just a little, I'm concerned and I'm also, I'm concerned about where the positions are, who are the twenty-two staff members that aren't coming back to the building. And also, um, so we were supposed to start hybrid. Um, so I was just curious what the plan was. Um, if we had gone hybrid, what would have happened? What was the plan back in August when we were thinking about hybrid and these staff members that weren't coming back? I am a teacher myself and I work in another district outside of um, Winthrop, but I do know, and we are fully remote right now. But we do have a plan in place. Our classrooms are already set up in our cohorts to go hybrid. The students that are going to be remote for the year are already with the teacher that is remote for the year. Um, so I'm just curious. I know it was a lot of planning over the summer for the staffing where I work and I'm just curious how Winthrop's going to get that done in order to get our kids in the building in a reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Staff. Do we have any further public comment?
Uh, let me see. We have um, Jenna Dorr. Jenna, did you have something else to say?
Um, no, that was it.
Okay.
Further public comment?
Yep, we have a, I have someone here, um, this is Zoom user.
Hi, Patty?
Patty? Yes?
Hi, sorry, that that's me. Kathleen Cappuccio.
Hi, Kathleen. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I wrote this down, so I'll be quick. Hello, Kathleen Cappuccio. I have three children in the Winthrop Public Schools, seventh, eighth, and eleventh grades. With regard to the twenty-two staff as of today, not wanting to come back to the school for in-person learning, I have a few questions, comments. If the staff members have already stated that they do not want to return to school, at what point can the school start the hiring process to replace these staff members? I would hope we can replace the staff members quickly as it would be a tough pill to swallow for many of us that our children would not be going back to school just because we didn't have the appropriate staffing. Also, when we go to a hybrid model, I assume teachers who choose to not return to the physical building would not have the option to teach remotely. Um, I'm not sure, you know, if that's maybe in um, the MOU. Also, um, I'm curious to know if the Winthrop School Committee votes to commence the hybrid model, even if we are in the red, what are the ramifications to Winthrop from the Department of Education, if any? I feel the school committee not, excuse me, I'm sorry. I feel that the school committee should not only refer to the state's metrics of Winthrop being in the red, but we also need to weigh the damage being done to our students emotional and mental health since March. Numerous studies are showing that students are suffering emotionally and mentally. As I'm sure many are aware, um, addiction rates are increasing approximately thirty-five percent. People that are looking for uh, mental health, um, um, counseling right now has increased about fifty percent. And that's from people that haven't even used um, therapy before. So I really think that's important. Um, I think it really needs to be a risk analysis. And then lastly, would it be possible to send a survey to parents and or guardians of Winthrop School students asking if said parents or guardians are wanting our children to go back to school for in-person learning inside the buildings if we are in the red? Um, I would just like, I think that would be helpful. Um, almost, I would say ninety percent of the people that I'm talking to that have children in Winthrop Public Schools want the children back in the schools regardless of the red des, excuse me, red designation. So um, again, these were just my um, thoughts and comments, uh, questions rather. So if anyone wants to respond via email, if they get get a chance, that would be great. And again, I just want to um, also thank um, Lisa Lisa Howard for everything that she's doing. I know she wants to get our kids back into the school quickly. Um, and also quickly, Meredith Hurley, I'm not sure if she's still on, but she really is a, has been such a rock star in during COVID for this whole town of Winthrop. Um, who knows, maybe we should even name a street after her at some point. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it and have a great night.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I believe that that is it. That's it for public comment.
Okay, moving on to public relations. Ms. Barry, do you have anything this evening?
No, I don't.
Ms. Swope?
No, I mean, I, this has just been a, I know a tough time. None of us had thought that we would ever be facing this when we joined the school committee. And um, I know I'm conservative in my response to kids being safe. And I know everybody wants them to be safe, but I I mean, I guess I would err on the side of keeping them out of school versus putting them into school just as I'm thinking about not only the kids and the teachers, but really the entire community. So I um, I don't, I have not responded to all the emails that we received, but I have, I read them all. And I do know that um, we are at risk and we can't control the virus. I mean, we can do what we can with masks, et cetera, but we personally can't control what's going to happen in this in this situation. So um, in this situation. So, um, I know we're all trying to do the best we can. Just two ideas I had. One is while we are in this situation, hopefully the parents, and I know they probably do, I, I know I have some ideas. I spend my whole time with kids too, all day long. And just trying to think about the things that might help, you know, that, that could be, um, helpful to other parents. I think that's a, always a good idea. And that we can just continue to be patient, um, with each other as well as with the kids that are at home as well as with, um, as well with this virus. So hopefully we'll get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swope. Mr. Matucci, do you have anything this evening for public relations?
Sure.
Mr. Capabianco?
Um.
Mr. Boncori?
Just to tell people to please be safe and I want everybody back at school and I don't even want them in hybrid. I want them in full class, uh, as soon as possible and as fast as possible. But do that. You're going to have to follow rules and start wearing masks and social distance and wash your hands and go and get tested. We worked our butts off to get a testing center in Winthrop. We got a testing center in Winthrop. It's been there. It's going to stay there until the end of October, the last day of October. So I went and got tested again Saturday and, uh, came up negative and I'm asking you all to go get tested so that Meredith has a tool to work with. She knows if there's a cluster somewhere, if it's a positive group, we can work on it and then maybe get them away from people and we get out of this red and into the green. Not yellow, green.
Agreed.
Absolutely. Ms. Powell, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, the high school today was scheduled to have a college presentation for the seniors to get them moving and help them make those applications. That presentation, because we can't be live as we have traditionally done, is going to be available online to parents. So if you are a parent of a senior or know a parent of a senior, make sure to tell them to go to the website and, and look at that presentation if you need any information about college applications. Also, the, um, WIN twenty-thirty Actionable Visioning Committee is having a public hearing this Thursday from six-thirty to eight PM. That's an opportunity for people in the community to talk about what they want for the future of our community. The schools are going to be a part of that. And after that hearing, there's also going to be a, an online survey and I encourage everybody to participate, both with being a part of that, that meeting, that it'll be a Zoom meeting. You can find out about that through the town's website and also through that hearing so that your voices can be heard about where we're going to take our town.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yep.
Mr. Boncori?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Thank you, everyone.
At all.
Good night.